Commissioners public carrying the time is nine thirty AM. Erica, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Malika?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Baca?
Here. If you can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, made visible with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
As outlined. Oh.
I was talking at the same time and our voices were at the same tone, so I don't think you heard me talking.
I didn't hear you talking. Go ahead.
I move to approve the agenda with my colleague Commissioner Malika. The motion passes five to zero, so. Item four of the agenda, we do not have any awards and presentations this morning, so we're on to public comment. Erica, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have two people signed up for one of the land use cases today, but no general comment.
Okay, so both are for land use?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to um come down and speak under public comment? That didn't sign up? Okay, not seeing anybody, we'll move on to elected official communication. Commissioner Hudson?
Hi, good morning, everyone. I just wanted to say briefly, I was uh fortunate enough to attend the National Association of Counties Annual Summer Conference in Philadelphia over the weekend. Uh returning home yesterday, and I just want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to go do that. It's uh those are always valuable experiences to be in other cities and counties and see and also gather with local county officials and staff from across the country. There are always interesting sessions, but it's also just con conversing with fellow electeds and staff members who are in county and local government across the country, because a lot of us are facing similar challenges and and it's always good to to brainstorm and hear what other folks are doing. It also is a valuable time to spend time with um fellow county commissioners from across Colorado or Colorado caucus. We have a wide range of of needs and uh and sizes of counties, but it's always good to come together and share time with them and hear what they're doing and where we can learn from each other. So I just wanted to express my gratitude for that. I'll be sharing some ideas I shared with staff and my colleagues. I'll be sharing some ideas of things I learned about and some of which we might already be doing. I will give that caveat, having been on the commission less than a year, but always great discussion points, and so I'm excited to share what I what I learned. And it was and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have represented Adams County there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Malika?
Yes, and I also attended um NACO this weekend, and again, like Kathy was saying, it's it's such of a pleasure to be able to have these conversations with similar pe- people all over the country. And you know, I talked to somebody about how they hosted their first economic development conference um for the county, which I thought was really awesome. So connecting up on those conversations, um talking about how to incorporate new technologies into Adams County, and of course, ways that we could be engaging with residents better uh and and educating them on the work that we do every single day with the amazing people that are in this room. So wanted to again, yeah, just express my um gratitude for being able to go. It was an amazing conference with lots of great ideas that we'll be coming back to the county. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Others? Not seeing anything. So we're on to the consent calendar, just need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. And that motion passes five to zero. So item number seven, we're on to new business. Um we have the acting county manager, while Deion is out this week, uh Kristen Sullivan.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. We have three items under new business today, and I'll start with item number one, which is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County and the state of Colorado regarding the Fuels Impact Reduction Grant Program. And Janet Lundquist from Public Works is here to present.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm super excited to be here today. This is the first step in um a long-term project for the county uh that we're really psyched about, and um basically this all started with Senate Bill twenty-three-two-eighty, um which is a hazard material mitigation bill that's aimed at looking at how can the state support critically impacted communities um through uh the production of oil and gas materials, but then also recognizing their connection to transportation. As you guys are full aware, um we have I twenty-five, I two-seventy, I seventy, I seventy-six, um so many uh major corridors that are used to fuel um the state of Colorado and beyond. And so these funds are set aside um to help communities much like ours. Um we will be receiving up to sixty-four percent of the set aside of the Fuel Impact Enterprise Fund, which breaks down to six point four million dollars annually for us to receive with a total of thirty-eight point four million um from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine. Um it's super exciting for us to start this project, and this is our the very beginning of our conversation with you. Towards the end of this month, we're going to come uh to study session with the board so we can start brainstorming. How do we want to prioritize projects? How do we want to make these impactful funds serve Adams County? So and we have um some coordination with some of our great partners in our local communities and of course CDOT. Um so we're really excited to start that conversation in a couple of weeks with y'all, but this is a great way to start the day, right? Hooray, we are where we got a Fuel Impact Enterprise Grant Fund coming to Adams County. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions or talk in general.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your presentation, Janet. Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. Thanks, Janet. Just a a quick question on the timeline. So you said we're the funds were awarded. The timeline is twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine, so I'm assuming this first installment we're talking about. What is the time? That's the twenty-twenty-four allotment or allocation, and when do we anticipate if when we approve if we approve this today, when will we be seeing those funds?
So we already have um the first installment for twenty-twenty-four in the bank.
Okay.
And we're about to get the second influx of that six point four um here very shortly. So we'll have twelve point eight million dollars in hand um to work on our very first project um ready to go. So we have to get some forms turned back into CDOT this week, and then I would imagine within the next couple of weeks we'll get our second installment.
Wonderful, thank you. And you're right, this is a great way to start the day. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Malika then Odoricio.
Um yeah, really, this is exciting stuff for Adams County. It's great dollars that we're going to be able to put to use um here in our county. I just want to thank our legislators who helped pass this. Well, I beat you to it, um because we would not have this money if they didn't um do that hard work many years ago, so.
Yeah, and I I have to give credit where credit is due. So this was spearheaded by um Senator Kyle Malika and then also Mark Snyder. So those guys, I think, were the brainchild that are helping us out today.
Okay, Commissioner Odoricio.
Wait, took the wind out of my sails. I wanted to say, no, I think it's important to recognize that uh you know, a lot of the things that we 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 sometimes get frustrated with the folks at the legislature, and it's really nice though when we can point out uh those who've been champions and advocates for uh addressing some of these uh disproportionate impacts that communities like Adams County face because all of the fuel uh comes uh into Adams County that is distributed out of there. And so uh I really want to thank uh Mark Snyder and of course Senator Malika, because this brings in forty million dollars for us to try to address uh some of those concerns and the disproportionate realities that we face because we are uh the center of that distribution point, uh good or bad. It can be bad, and we need to address those issues that happen uh and those challenges that the communities around those distribution points face. So I really want to thank those guys. I mean, forty million dollars to help us try to make things better is a is a significant benefit, so. Thank you very much, uh Senator Representative Snyder and uh Senator Malika. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. So looking forward to this conversation. Um all of my commissioners, you know, they took the wind out of my sails as well. I would just, you know, as we get into this discussion, really prioritize uh those communities, as Commissioner Odoricio said, that are at the distribution point. Um we have some communities that have air quality challenges, congestion challenges. They see additional truck traffic um production, and I know this is a substantial amount of money. I mean, it's not going to do one whole project, um but it will. Hopefully, I would like to look at things that would affect generations to come. You know, I think that, yes, we had talked about sidewalks and curb and gutter, but I think we we make the right investments that we can see a real change here in Adams County. So this is really fantastic and um of course want to thank and appreciate uh those state senators and representatives that really listen to the heart of Adams County and what our challenges really are. Yeah, so with that, I will go ahead and make a motion to um approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Janet. Kristen?
Excuse me. Item number two is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Three C's Parent Connections in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for child mentoring, life skills, family time, and home-based services. And Katie McDougall, the Director of Human Services, will present this item.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Katie McDougall, the Director of Human Services. We are requesting a three-year contract with uh Three C Parent Connections for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, totaling seven hundred and fifty thousand for all three years. As Kristen mentioned, uh it's to provide child mentoring, life skills, family time, and home-based services. And uh these services will support caregivers around behavior modification, bonding and attachment, household management, accessing community resources, family crisis management, and parenting skills. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Katie. Commissioner Malika?
So have we already worked with the um Three C's Parent Connections in the past?
I let me look to my.
Sorry.
Friend of friend in the audience.
No, this is a new contract. This is a new contract. Okay, great, awesome. Um really, that solves my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
And that was, this is a three-year contract, so this is the seven fifty spread out over three years is what you said. Okay, great. And so are we, is or is is this, are we adding skills or at, excuse me, adding supports through this contract? Or is this um are we substituting a provider for these services from a previous provider? How did we arrive at Three C's?
Uh so we uh are always looking at how do we expand our portfolio of these services throughout our county so that we have the greatest reach. So this is an example of a new partner. Uh while we might have some of these services in place, we're looking to make sure that we have them available for all children and all families.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Then I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
And the motion passes five to zero. So thank you, Katie. I think you're here for the next one as well.
That's right. Um the next one is item number three, which is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Seeing Our Adolescents Rise, also known as SOAR, in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for life skills, mental health services, animal assisted therapy, and youth intervention services. And Katie will also answer any questions on this item.
Good morning, commissioners. Still Katie McDougall, uh the Human Services Director. We are requesting a three-year contract at two hundred thousand dollars a year, totaling six hundred thousand for all three years with SOAR. Uh the services are to provide life skills, mental health services, including animal assisted therapy and youth intervention services for youth ages seven to eighteen and their families. Uh services also will really provide modalities for cognitive behavioral therapy, which uh is evidence-based and uh something that we understand very well in our work that works uh for children. Um and I will take any questions you might have.
Commissioner Malika, then Hudson?
Is this a new um contract with this group?
Yep.
It is, thank you. Okay, the reason why I asked the question is when we're going to be renewing, right, the work with particular groups, I just want to make sure that the work that we've seen previously is meeting up to our expectations in part. So this is why I want to know that we're continuing to work with great um organizations and we're welcoming new ones um as they come. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. So is this going to be our first contract with a cognitive behavioral therapy provider, or do we already have that? Are we already offering that?
We already have a handful of other uh contractors who provide that.
Great. No, I'm I'm excited to see those services expand because I know I agree that the little bit I know about them, it's a very uh it's highly effective, and so I'm really glad to see us expanding that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anything else. Thank you. I'll go ahead and make a motion approving the agreement between Adams County and Seeing Our Adolescents Rise. Second. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much, Katie. Thank you, Kristen. So we're on to the county attorney. Um go ahead, Heidi.
Good morning, commissioners. Um I would ask that we go into executive session as time allows today pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four-six-four-oh-two-four-D for the purpose of discussing security arrangements for a large event.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Heidi. And then this, we're on to land use. Does staff need some time to set up for land use? Okay, so the time is nine forty-six. Um why don't we take a few minutes? We'll be back at nine fifty-five to um conduct the meeting for land use.
Uh the subject property is located in central Adams County, southeast of the Denver International Airport, and is about thirty-five point one acres. Uh please note that although there are two properties that encompass uh the PUD area, the proposed amendment um will only affect the northern lot, and no changes are proposed for the southern lot. The current zoning of the property is PUD, which encourages the development of land as a single unit and allows greater flexibility uh in the design of a development and uses allowed on the site. The future land use of the subject property is green energy and sustainable agriculture, which according to the Colorado Sub uh Space Board Subarea Plan or CASP, uh focuses on providing uh space for solar farm, other forms of renewable energy, and higher intensity agricultural uses. It's important to note that although the surrounding properties to this site are currently agricultural or vacant, they are under the jurisdiction of the city of Aurora. Uh and their current zoning designation is Airport District, um which allows a variety of commercial, light manufacturing, and distribution uses to occur on the site. Uh as we can see on the site photos, the area surrounding the property is rural and nature. And while some of the sites are vacant, uh there are some residential uses as well as industrial, and those include trucking operations and solar energy systems, uh particularly in the southern um south of this property. Um to better understand uh the current amendment proposal, it's best to understand how um this property got here in the first place. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, uh the subject property was reassigned into a PUD via case two-hundred-and-four-dash-ninety-seven-dash-PUD, which allowed the site um to have industrial uses conducive of the I-one designation, such as warehousing and distribution of animal feed and pet foods to be established on the site. Additionally, the PUD allowed the applicant at the time to keep their residential home on the site. In two thousand, the subject property was uh subdivided into two lots per case PRJ-two-thousand-dash-fifty-four. The subdivision created um two lots with the northern lot being thirty-five acres. The subdivision created two lots with the northern lot being thirty-five acres and the southern lot twenty-eight acres. No other changes were proposed at that time. And the last major entitlement to the PUD was made back in two thousand seven in the form of the first major amendment via case PUD two thousand seven dash seven which delineated uses to both Lot One and Two. As part of the changes to Lot One, the amendment will allow a mobile home to be used as a farm employee dwelling. All other uses in Lot One remain the same. The uses allowed on Lot Two were heavy equipment operation school associated with office shop and storage yard, outside storage up to a hundred percent of the building area and a warehouse and animal and pet food distribution. Now considering a major amendment to the PUD, the Commissioners need to consider the following criteria of approval when reviewing this application. That the PUD amendment meets conformity with the county's comprehensive plan and any applicable sub-area plan, that the proposal meets compliance with PUD standards and that is consistent with other previous approvals for the property and that any construction plans adhere to the standards and regulations of the county code and any of our referral agencies. As I mentioned previously, this proposed major amendment will only change the current uses to Lot, of Lot One only. There are no proposed use changes to Lot Two. The changes being proposed as part of this PUD include outdoor storage for up to fifteen acres, warehouse and distribution uses, office space, heavy equipment operations and school with the associate, associated storage yard and solar energy systems at a small scale. Now for the applicant to establish each of the proposed uses on the lot, a change in use will be required to properly review that the site meets compliance with all design and engineering regulations including setbacks, landscaping, drainage and site improvements as needed. Here's the proposed site plan for Lot One with the area in Tarkray as the outdoor storage area slash part of the school. And now as part of this entitlement process, a public notice and request for comments was sent to seventeen residents and property owners within a mile of the subject property. The distance was needed as there are many large properties throughout the area of the county. Only one public comment was provided, stayed in appreciation for the fact that the applicant was going through the proper channels to allow some of the uses on the subject property. No referral agencies had any concerns with this proposal. Planning Commission did hear this case back on January nine twenty twenty-five. During that hearing, the Commissioners requested an update from co-compliance related to the previous violations that were taking place on the site. Staff noted that violations on site were still unresolved even after requesting today sixty, two sixty-day continuance to date. Therefore, the Commission expressed concern over the violations and a lack of progress on the site. Due to these concerns, the Commissioners voted six to one to recommend denial of the entitlement request. From planning standpoint, given the current conditions of the site as well as the proposed site plan for the site, staff has been able to determine that the proposed amendment meets conformity with both the advancing comprehensive plan and the Colorado airspace port comprehensive plan. The proposed plan conforms with all PUD standards and is consistent with previous approvals on the site. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of case PUD twenty twenty-three dash two with two conditions and one finding of facts. Here are the findings of facts and the two conditions of approval which I'll just read very quickly. The applicant shall provide copies of the commercial well issued by the Colorado Division of Water Resources in order to turn the single-family dwelling unit into a commercial office space and the applicant shall obtain a building permit to convert the family dwelling into commercial office space. With, with that, I complete my presentation, but I am available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm gonna go over the land use process pretty quickly, so immediately following the staff presentation, we'll get to the board's questions here in just a moment. The applicant will then have an opportunity to come up and provide a presentation to the board. The question will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. We will then get to public comments, so if you're here for public comments, you'll be asked to come up at that time. You will get three minutes to speak, any questions that you do have. It's not a dialogue back and forth with the individual and the board, but you can ask your question, then it is at the pleasure of the board. If they hear your concern and ask a question, they pick that up and they can ask a question to the staff and or applicant. The applicant, if needed, will have an opportunity to respond on to public comments. It will come back to the board for discussion and then we'll entertain a motion at that time. So right now, we're gonna get to questions from the board. Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, so can you pull up the satellite image of the property? Can you zoom in? Is there a way to like just actually pull up Google Maps? Can you help me understand? It looks like a junkyard. Like, I don't understand why, like, I, I don't remember this case. I mean, did it, it came in front of us or not?
Yes, Commissioner, back and based on that, can you go back to the presentation? March eighteen was the last time it was heard by you, Commissioner.
To continue?
To continue, correct, to address those issues.
But I guess my concern is like, can you go back to that picture? Like, you're saying that none of these issues have been resolved. That literally looks like it's an environmental junkyard. Like, I'm trying to understand, why would we also place a condition of approval not, put it as a note that they have to comply with these other, like, laws and codes when it, why can't it be a condition instead of just a soft note? Given the history of what we're seeing here.
Perhaps it'd be helpful to have, we have our code enforcement staff here that did an inspection as early or as recently as Friday of last week. Perhaps they could come up to the microphone to provide an update on the current condition of the property, which might be helpful. I'm not sure of the timing of when this Google aerial image is, is taking place, just to be clear on what the current condition of the property is.
Yeah, okay, that's, we can do that, but then my next question is, is can we go back? So when you compare this to what's being proposed, how do we not, even if it's cleaned up now, go back to that junkyard look? And I'm also worried environmentally, what might be happening there?
What I can say from staff perspective is that we, we provide recommendations based on current criteria of approval. Code violations are not part of that criteria of approval, Commissioner.
Well, I'm gonna ask for an executive session, that one, it's appropriate with this board. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Oh, I'm so sorry, Commissioner Henson, I don't see you there.
Oh, okay.
But you're okay. Commissioner Henson and Commissioner Molika.
Thank you. So what is the current status for code, what is the current code compliance status of this property?
I will let my team provide that update for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Gail Moon, Code Compliance Supervisor. With me is David Halbert, Code Compliance Officer that did the inspection last Friday and I'm gonna let him give an update of what he observed on Friday.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, yeah, I did an inspection on Friday. I could see a little progress being made. There's still a lot of vehicles behind the screen fencing that are unlicensed, looks like junk that I can see from the right of way because we can't access the property, so I can only inspect from the right of way. And there's some semi-trucks, there's still the trucking school there and pretty much, yeah, they're still violating the PUD.
So just to add on to David's comments, approving this today would resolve some of the code compliance issues. There are a few that will remain, but we have been discussing some of the violations with the attorney of the property owner and they now seem to have possession of some of the property. Some of the tenants have been evicted, some of the violations have been cleared and now they have access to finish complete clearing and bringing those up. And code compliance does feel that in the near future that this property could come into compliance with the regulations. And again, approving of this case would also resolve some of the violations that we issued.
Can you articulate why that is? If we approve the case, how does it resolve the issues? Because of the standards are different?
Yes, because the allowed uses, like the trucking company that is in violation right now would not be a violation moving forward because it would be an allowed use on the property. So that violation would be cleared by the approval of this amendment to the PUD. The auto repair and the unlicensed and operable vehicles, those are still a violation and approving this would not clear those. However, the attorney has assured us that the owner of the property is in process of getting those violations removed from the property and quickly. So they are giving their, you know, they're giving us their assurance that they take this serious and that they want to come into compliance with that regulation. The animals, the owner of the animals has been evicted from the property. So all of the livestock and animals that were on the property that also violated the PUD are, have been removed and are not there right now. So again, some of the violations have been removed, some of them are in the process of being removed and then the approval of this amendment would fix some of the other violations. So there's a lot going on at one time.
Okay.
Did you have something? Yeah, I wasn't done. So what, how long has this, so this is a CDL school?
Yes.
Okay, and how long has that school been operating there?
I do not, do you know that answer? I do not know that answer.
Okay. So hypothetically, if this were approved today, then that school, that CDL school is no longer a violation of the PUD.
Correct.
There are still outstanding, there's still, there's still other issues that are not in compliance with our code. Even if, even if removing that, we still have other code violations.
Correct, that are in the, that the owner and the attorney have assured they are in the progress, process of taking care of rather quickly. I can just base it off good faith that they are going to do what they're saying.
Okay, and also just one more question and this, so this item has not been before the Planning Commission since January.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, sorry. Okay, those are my questions for right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Mr. Molika?
My questions will probably be better suited for an executive session that Commissioner Odoricio proposed at the appropriate time, so.
I would support an executive session as well. I don't know if we want to make a motion now and then go ahead, Commissioner Pinter.
Chair, I really appreciate that and I also agree with the executive session question. I am curious to hear the applicant's perspective.
That too.
Just to take that into consideration as we are asking hopefully thoughtful questions of our attorney, you never know. To try to get to what is the best path forward for Adams County and what is our legal parameter. So I, I don't have any more questions for staff. I concur with the questions for the attorneys. I would like to hear from the applicant at a minimum.
Okay, thank you so much, Gail, for coming up. Any, so any additional questions for staff before we ask the applicant to come on? I do have questions, I'm not sure, we'll listen to the applicant, I may follow up with staff here in a moment. So if the applicant would like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, David Foster, here on behalf of the applicant, forty-three hundred Hudson. Devinder Sandhu is here with me as well. Appreciate the time this morning and I'm gonna try and answer some of the questions. I'm gonna, we do have a, a presentation, but frankly, many of the issues your staff has already addressed and I'd much rather get to the concerns that you all have. Let me start by doing something that I probably have never done and that is thanking zoning compliance. That is a group that obviously doesn't get a lot of accolades, but I just want to thank, you know, the team over there. We've stayed in regular communication with them. I think frequently you'll have applicants or others doing their best not to respond to zoning compliance and that is the exact opposite of the approach that Devinder and our team has taken throughout this entire process. When we were at the Planning Commission back in January, the issue about the uses and the new entitlement wasn't a concern to the Planning Commission, I was there. What was a concern is what still is a concern in maybe some of your minds and that is, boy, that site seems to be in violation. And Commissioner Odoricio, the Google map that you just saw, that's not a drone, that's not drone footage, that's old footage. And so much of what you see on that site is gone and has been improved. What we had asked of you a couple of times was a continuance and that was granted both in January and in March. And so here we are, because we knew that the process of evicting tenants wasn't going to be easy or quick. And you'll also remember when I was first here asking for a continuance, I was a little bit vague in how I was describing what we were doing because we were going through a procedure through court. We wanted it to kind of take its shape and form, which it has. So as staff has mentioned, we did evict a couple of our tenants, they are gone. And the last tenant that was creating the, the remaining, I would say, violations was actually here just a minute ago because the, the court order, and I, I made copies to the extent that you would like that, I'll maybe. This was the last court order and it was, and it's for that, that one last property. And you'll see that we have possession of the premises as of today. And we are in a position where we can now call out the sheriff and have assistance in removing the, the remaining issues that create the ongoing violations. So I, this is, I think this is great news and not bad news and so I'm, I'm happy to deliver that information to you this morning. Let me, do I just click this? Just use, how do I? Oh, thanks. Actually, the background I, I hope everybody's familiar with at this point in terms of, and why the property wasn't entirely rezoned in two thousand and seven, I don't know. And in fact, when Devinder bought the property, he thought it actually had the entitlements from the two thousand and seven rezoning. Why it was divided between lots one and lots two? No idea, but it was. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a little bit more symmetry between the uses that are allowed on these two lots. And then I wanted to, you've seen this. Those are the standards that will be applicable to, to the site. Comprehensive plan, you guys have already heard that. I wanted to, this is what I wanted you to see. So the code violation issued for the property is cleanup junk and debris on property, outdoor storage not permitted unless PUD amendment granted. And then that's an excerpt below directly from the order that we received. And so that is what we've been working hard to, to, to fix. And, and we have solved two of the three issues. The third issue, again, they are literally, if you were to go up to the property today, you would see storage, vehicles being moved off. The, the tenants are moving the debris and other storage and vehicles off the property. As of last week, they are there today. They thought this was court this morning in front of you, so they were a little bit concerned because of the order that they now have in, in their possession. They don't want the sheriffs showing up to do this. We're, we're trying to do our best to be thoughtful about remediation of a site. And it's super expensive. Everything that I've just described over the last year and, and you could say it's Devinder's fault for, for leasing property to people who ended up turning out to not do the things that they said that they were going to do. But those are certain risks that we take and then we pay the price and he has significantly. And it has taken a long time through court. And it has taken a long time through court, through a process, and we're here today because as, uh, Gail mentioned. Um, that trucking school is a great use, uh, for that site. Uh, and, um, with your approval today, that will actually be, uh, allowed, uh, moving forward. So we continue to make our commitment to continuing to clean this up. I think we've given you evidence that we've done that. I'm happy to answer any further questions that you might have.
Great, thank you so much. Um, questions for the, from the board for the applicant? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, can you go back to the map and show us specifically which tenants are gone and which ones are remaining?
Or in process, if I could add a friendly amendment, gone, in process, or remaining.
Okay, and I was gonna mention the trucking school that was asked, that has been one of his initial tenants, so they've been there for about four years. Yeah. Boy, Devinder. Can you help? Just introduce yourself and then maybe you can describe where the different tenants were on the property.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, uh, uh, uh. And, uh, all the tenants that you guys see behind those two sheds, uh, they are, uh. Uh, we have already got rid of them. There is one, uh, you know, that's, uh, still, you know, there that we already have, uh, in a mixed, uh, order. Granted by the judge and we're in the process of, uh, getting them, uh, removed out of there. The trucking school is still there, but they don't have any junk over there. Their equipment is, uh. Uh, well in compliance with the code, uh, of the trucking, uh, school of. Uh, highway patrol because obviously they are issuing their licensing and training the, the, the. Training, uh, the people to create more jobs in trucking, uh, which is a good thing for the community. And they are fully licensed to do so, so, uh, they are still at the site.
Let me be more specific. So I would say the lower, uh, portion where you see. Um, more of the debris is this last tenant, Tomasi. Uh, where that's being removed presently and where we have the order to go in and remove it, um, through the sheriffs.
Can, can you pull up the Google map? And zoom in to the area that they're referring to. That's what I'm referring to.
So all that is cleaned up on the side. There's one tenant that's still there, uh. That tenant's still there that we got the order to move.
So I have a question for staff, like if this were approved, is this allowable use?
Commissioner, there will be a specific, um, area that will be allowed for outdoor storage, which will be this, uh, dark gray. It will be about fifteen acres that will allow the applicant to have outdoor storage in addition to the trucking school.
Okay, so let, let me just make it, so when you compare what you just showed on the screen. Compared to what you showed, go back to Google maps. That whole area will be totally blank and empty and not used for outdoor storage.
That is correct.
So that will be cleaned up and gone.
Yes.
And not just moved to the north.
No. Correct, Commissioner.
Let me, let me also clarify the very specific question I need to ask. Could this be transferred two hundred yards to the north and be legal?
Whether it can or can't, we're not, that's not a tenant any longer of our.
That's, you know, that's different.
No, no, Commissioner, I, I want to be clear, we're not, this is a tenant who has violated his lease.
Yeah.
We have spent, I can't even tell you how many tens of thousands of dollars to remove them. We're not. Moving them to a different location on our site, not happening. That's not happening and we're not trying to get an approval for outdoor storage in order to move this junkyard on the north side, not happening.
So, so how do we, how do we fulfill that promise?
Well, you have conditions for your outdoor storage that that site doesn't meet.
I clear.
And in order for outdoor storage to meet that, have to have recycled asphalt, have to have six foot high fencing. It's in the, it's in the standards that were just on the screen. So we'd have to meet those standards in order to get a permit.
So what I'm specifically asking, and I haven't gotten from our staff, so thank you, is, and, and maybe this will be done in executive session is. If we were to permit outdoor storage, would I see there be permitted anywhere on the property? That's maybe a question that I'm hearing you said, no, because this would not meet the standards. But I'm now concerned because I haven't heard that from our attorneys and staff that I think I need to hear because. I can't support something that allows this to be moved anywhere within a property or anywhere in the county because this is. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing due diligence and holding, uh, polluters, junkers and others that are polluting your ground. And our community accountable by getting rid of them. But what I'm worried about is if there's two tenants here. I'm not that much impressed with either one of these two tenants at this point, uh, right here on the screen that I see. And I'd be concerned that you might get rid of one, but if the other one has the same practice and the same tolerance.
Who's the other one?
I don't know, you guys said that that two, that there's one still remaining.
Yeah, that, it's just this.
You literally just said that there's two tenants and you removed one of them.
The, I'm sorry, let me, it's the trucking school is the other tenant. That's the other tenant. I'm sorry if that was unclear.
So this is one tenant.
That is correct.
Okay, that's not how I heard it. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I'll let other people ask some questions. I still have that question for staff.
For any new use, even though the P U D amendment will be amended. Any new use in order to be established on the property will require a formal change in use in order for staff to review. Um, that it meets all the criteria of our land use development code, Commissioner. So it's not just moving and it will be set, it, it will have to come back to staff for us to review and make sure that all compliance are met.
I'm gonna ask some more detailed questions about it, get some legal advice on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Malika?
Um, yes, this actually goes to staff. So for, um, the proposed outdoor space that we're seeing on our screen right now. Outdoor storage, um, what is allowed to be put on outdoor storage? Per, by that definition, what does that mean?
Sure, so, um, outdoor storage would consist of any materials that are non-hazardous.
Non-hazardous materials, okay.
Yes.
And then your proposal is actually to just put the trucking school right in this outdoor storage space that we're seeing in gray.
So right now the trucking school is located.
Okay.
Uh, in a portion of that, so, um, that's not to say that we wouldn't have a future tenant. Don't have one now.
Okay.
But that might occupy some of that space.
Yeah.
For outdoor storage.
Okay.
But we don't have any, any plans for a, a future tenant.
Okay, alright, that makes sense. And so also just wanted to clarify the dwelling situation here. There's a single fam, so this proposed amendment would have a single family dwelling. And can you just give me an idea, where is that located in this lot? And then where would be the mobile home? Used for far, for farm employee dwelling?
So Commissioner, there's only one dwelling and it will be right here. The dwelling that you're mentioning, uh, that was only part of the first amendment, but I believe that that has been removed at this time.
Okay.
For the farm workers.
So we're really talking about one dwelling on site, the single family house?
That is correct.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
So, is that dwelling, I thought, I thought I saw something that said that's gonna be converted to an office.
That is correct, Commissioner.
So the plan, correct, please clarify, will anybody be living on this lot?
No, Commissioner. It will remove the ability of, this amendment will remove the ability of anyone to be able to live in the property.
Thank you. My other question is. So we have proposed outdoor storage for fifteen acres, asphalt surface, that is where the trucking school will be operating. Is that correct?
Correct.
They have, and this, what we are being asked to approve today would give them permission. To have that kind of outdoor storage, which has to comply with all of our current standards for outdoor storage.
Correct, well, uh, and I, if I may add, even though the trucking, um, school is right there, they will still need to come in. And submit a formal change in use in order to make sure that the grading, any pavement that needs to be added to the site. It's in compliance with the regulations.
So we are not approving that today?
Correct.
Correct, thank you. I mean, I shouldn't say correct, I'm saying thank you. So immediately south of this grayed out area where the asphalt surface is going to be. I think that's correct, right? They're talking south, yes, where your arrow is. Are we approving that area also for outdoor storage today?
You will, uh, no, it will just be this specific section slated for outdoor storage.
So if in the future somebody want, if there was a tenant who wanted to do outdoor storage on the. Whiter, lighter area that's not part of today's request, they would have to come. That would have to come back to us to allow that outdoor storage.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, any additional questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any. Thank you so much. Alright, what is the pleasure of the board? Do you want to, I several asked for executive session, do you want to get to public comment? I mean, it's your call. I mean, like, I, I think public comment could be really helpful. I don't know who's here, I don't know who signed up. Sure.
Yeah.
We'll do public comment then. Thank you, Erica.
I don't have anyone signed up for this.
Not for this particular one. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk to this land use case? Um, you have three minutes to do so, even if you didn't sign up. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So at this time, I look to the attorneys to help us with the language for executive session.
Yes, that would be pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice. Regarding this land use case.
Great, thank you, Heidi.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio? Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So the time is ten thirty-two. Let's start. With just over fifteen minutes, let's reconvene at ten fifty, depending on, um. The amount of discussion, if we exceed that, then we'll come back out and do an extension.
I'm sorry.
So the board is coming back from executive session regarding the Van Pelt case. It is the pleasure of the board if you wanted to continue the executive session. Since we had promised the applicant and the public that we would be back almost 25 minutes ago. So I'm either seeking a continuance of the executive session or we continue the public, the land use hearing case.
I'm trying to say we continue the land use hearing case and then we may have an opportunity later to continue the land use hearing case if we decide, but I said we continue.
Continue the land use.
We proceed on the case.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to respond to the first thing I thought I heard Commissioner Odoricio say, and if I heard it wrong, then I would appreciate a correction. What I feel like I heard you say first is that you would like to continue the land use matter. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, we were using the proceed versus continue. The question I think was on the table from the chair was, do we want to come out and then continue the executive session? Not continue the land use matter.
And then I would say we do not need to continue the executive session in the back. I would say we proceed with the case today as we go and then we can still decide to continue the case for another day if we decide to, after we hear testimony and dialogue and questions and discussion.
I'm going to ask the question differently so that I understand it. I have no more questions for our attorneys. I have questions for our staff and for the applicant.
Same.
I have no more use of executive session today, but I don't want to deprive any of my colleagues of the opportunity to ask our attorneys a question. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the attorneys?
No.
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 Okay, so we're going to start our conversation or resume our conversation in the public setting. Is that, and we're all in agreement on that? Great.
Great, thank you for that.
Okay, so then I just needed that clarity because some words have similar meanings, so thank you.
Okay, so we had heard from the public, I didn't, we do not need an applicant response, no one from the public spoke to this matter, so it's up for Commissioner discussion.
I do have some questions, but I wasn't sure, I didn't want to like, I know that during executive sessions, folks express some things they'd like to bring back up, but I'm happy to get first in the queue or if someone else wants to get started.
Commissioner Pinter, you're up.
Okay, thank you ma'am. All right, hi. So it, staff, it is of great concern to me that we are moving forward with this land use item while there are open violations. However, I understand that we want to get to a place where we have land use standards that fit the uses appropriate for the land, and so we're having this conversation in an opportunity to bring the parcels into compliance, not into the compliance so that they no longer have to comply with standards, but into compliance where we can have regular inspections, standards that make sense, standards that are consistent. Can you talk to me about if we vote yes today? How many types of inspections would we have? What types of visibility would code enforcement have? Our ability to enforce the standards as proposed, maybe we go to the staff recommendation slide, which I think is sixteen. Yes, so if we do this approval with the findings of facts and conditions, what are inspection opportunities moving forward to have the public have some understanding of compliance?
Sure, thank you for the question, Jen Rutter, Planning and Development Manager. I'll begin by answering and then I'll probably hand it over to our code compliance team because they'll have more information about that aspect.
Fair enough, thank you.
So if this were to be approved today, any uses on the site either existing or to come would require a change in use permit, which is essentially the site plan review that staff uses to evaluate not just the site plan, but also parking and landscaping, performance standards associated with that use. Oftentimes, there's screening involved specifically for the outdoor storage, it would be required to be screened, either with a wood fence or masonry. Subsequent to the change in use approval, we would have a site inspection to verify that those things have been met prior to a notice to proceed on the property. We would have a staff person go out and verify that everything that had been proposed in that change in use application, the parking, landscaping, et cetera, had actually been implemented. And so that would be the first site inspection for that type of permit and then beyond that, once the use is formally established, I would hand it over to code compliance for any additional follow-up inspection information.
So before we get to that, Gail, thank you. I just have some follow-up questions about what that would look like.
Sure.
We know that this area, this land, you know, parcel is in a freight logistics corridor. We know that. We know that we want to have good standards that protect our water table as well as the neighbors, suitability, et cetera, right? Can you talk me through what protections we'd have once the screening was up to have some assurances that the vehicles aren't degrading and melting into the ground as we've seen on other parcels in the past? Some assurances that drainage and hazmat materials are being managed because the benefit of screening is that you don't see the storage, you know, for operational vehicles that are necessary for a freight logistics corridor economic capacity to thrive. The con of that is like, what are the standards that they are being expected to meet while they are operating that business so we can have some reassurances, particularly around water table, land contamination runoff, that sort of thing?
Sure, and we would, and I had for, I'd not mentioned that as part of the change in use permit process, we'd also do an engineering review. And so we would ensure that all parking surfaces are appropriate, that there is drainage mitigation in place.
What does appropriate mean?
Parking surface?
Yeah.
All parking specifically would be required to be paved with either concrete or asphalt and then outdoor storage would just require some sort of hard, hard, I think crushed asphalt was being proposed here specifically. So an increase in impervious area would be evaluated. They're very likely to have a detention pond that's going to be required. Any types of access points in and out of the site, if there's additional traffic that's being generated, a traffic impact study is going to be required. So at the time of change in use permit, those are the types of things that we're going to be evaluating. As to your other questions, that would be out, once we approve the use on the site, there are no additional inspections that the planning staff would be following up on.
Okay, so then that would be, I think, the code compliance component. Thank you.
Good morning again. This is Gail Moon, Code Compliance Supervisor. As often as necessary, code compliance will go out and inspect the property. We would have to comply with the rights that we would be allowed to view the property from, which could be an adjoining property, an adjacent property, could be the right-of-way, could be an agreement with the owner of the property if we contact them ahead of time and say, hey, can we come do an inspection? It could be any of those things, but we could go out and view the property from a public right-of-way anytime necessary to see what we could see. Correct? You are correct about, the screening does pose sometimes challenges for us to see violations behind the screening, so yes, that is accurate.
Okay, thank you. That helps me. Can you also talk through what you perceive if we approve today as the pathway from a code compliance for standard to get this parcel and their tenants or ex-tenants into compliance with the standards upon approval and moving forward?
Again, the one violation that is being cited for the owners of the property is that they are in violation of the PUD. If it's not on the PUD, it's not allowed. So there may be several instances of what's going on on the property that's not allowed, but it technically is one violation in violation of the PUD. So by approving the case today, you would potentially remedy one of the issues of what they're not, what they're in violation of, but doesn't cure the violation completely.
Okay.
And we would continue to do our, we would give a reasonable amount of time for them to come into compliance with other things. And again, code compliance has the history of if they're making significant progress on the property, we would continue to work with them. If the code officer goes out and sees that there's no significant progress, and you really emphasize the word significant, not just one car is gone in three weeks, I'm talking significant improvements. If the code officer doesn't feel that significant improvements are occurring, then we would potentially move forward with escalating it to the county attorney's office for further legal action.
Okay, so I think that is some phraseology, again, trying to be real specific with our words, that there's one violation because it's a conflict with the PUD, that would continue if they got approval today. And then under that one violation, there's a number of counts or factors or issues.
Correct.
And so the number of counts or factors or issues, I think is the word you're using, most of those would continue, though there would be illegally allowed trucking business, which would have to be in compliance, as planning just said, with the standards to have a trucking business.
And some of them have already been corrected.
In progress.
Yeah, some of them are in progress, some of them have already been corrected. Like I said, the livestock, having livestock on the property was a violation of the PUD, which was part of that and one of the issues on the property. Those have been removed, so technically we won't be looking for livestock, you know, that part we would not move forward with. We would only move forward with the issues of what would be in violation, which appears right now to be the outdoor storage of the unlicensed inoperable vehicles that are on the property. And that violation will remain open whether or not this case gets approved today and the amendment goes forward. The violation will stay open until the violation is corrected. So approving this does not close the violation case.
And there's an understanding, I'm sort of looking at you and the applicant behind you, that inoperable vehicles and disrepair, unlicensed, are not going to be acceptable either today or tomorrow if this were approved, that those need to be remediated.
The outdoor storage could be many different things. Again, I think Jen referred to if it's non-hazardous materials would be allowed to be outdoor storage.
With the non-permeable surface underneath and appropriate drainage.
Correct.
Is there more you wanted to add, Jen?
I can just read the definition of storage if that would be helpful.
I think that would actually bring some clarity.
Sure, so our storage is defined as the keeping of machinery, equipment, vehicles, including recreational vehicles, parts, materials, or other goods at the same location for a period of time in excess of seventy-two hours. So it's a very broad definition.
Thank you. These are my questions for now. I think we're going to have a good conversation, but this has been really illuminating and gives me some parameters about where we are now and what would happen or what's being requested with an approval.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to jump in here and then other members of the board. So as Commissioner Pinter said that the words matter, and so what I heard, I don't believe it was the intent, is that this PUD, what I heard is this PUD would be a vehicle of remedying some of the challenges on the property right now. I don't think that was intended that way. That's how it landed on me, is that if we do a PUD, all things are good and what we, I understand that is not the case, that things will continue on. My question for staff, and I don't know if this is planning or attorney, is the trucking business in particular, is while it's existing as a trucking business, the PUD, it would now then be a use by right, is that correct, a use by right? Is that what assurances are there that normally when we have a new business, we would do a site plan, and I don't think we call it that here at the county? Do we still have that process available to us to come in, set up the business, so to speak? Make sure that drain pans and pavement and safety and plans are all in place? That's my question.
Sally Daggett from the county attorney's office, and yes, absolutely, I think the applicant is hearing loud and clear that even if this PUD were to be approved today, that would allow the trucking use as of right, that still requires the trucking business to come in and obtain a change of use approval from the county, which is in effect, the county's site plan approval process, and as Jen Rutter indicated, it's not just a planning review, it's also an engineering review. So all of that will be required of the trucking business if the PUD is approved.
Okay, thank you so much for that, Sally. I'm going to go ahead and, I don't know if it's discussion or statements, which I can also make during the motion, is I can understand how our planning commission got to no and got to denial. That the track record, if on the surface you're looking at the documents, the case, the continuations, it does look like the continuations were made because violations continued. I think that the county, our culture here at Adams County is that we want to help applicants, we want to help small business. If that direction changes, then this board needs to have a conversation and give direction to staff. It does go a little bit beyond my comfort zone of how much this has been continued. But I understand that there are circumstances and whether that is, you know, change in representation, whether that is a weather event, which we've also seen happen that makes cases continue. So I want to say that upfront is that, you know, Adams County, I want to remain consistent that we want to help applicants as of today get through that without just escalating, I don't think escalating regulations without a solution, without an attempt to work with people and be collaborative is, that is not also good. But it did go past my comfort zone a little bit. I do want to talk about a little of those that didn't, you know, you had no concerns from our, what we call reference groups, or those groups that can also weigh in on the case and I want to, you did have one that said that they thanked you for going through the process. I also thank you for going through the process on this and really being, I don't feel that there's intent that I'm just going to, you know, throw my fist in the air and I'm going to violate your policies and your regulations. I'm going to go that you're coming into compliance and it's been obvious about your investment, legal investment, going through a court proceeding to evict an tenant, it does take long, I understand that. I want to be very reasonable about that. And then I also understand the use of a PUD. The PUD does offer you flexibility outside of your being the current owner, that whatever tenant or use that you have for that in the future, it does make sense to use that as a PUD when you're sandwiched between the city of Aurora on either side, offers flexibility that maybe in the future it does go to be a solar farm or it does have some other compatible use that is helpful to whether it's residence or logistics that moves out there near you. As far as the Board of County Commissioners and some of our history, and I only have about four and a half years underneath me, is that this board has seen, board general, not with Julie and Kathy, board in general, has seen that we have approved when there are active code violations. That's not great because I think that gives a mixed message of like, you can violate, but you can also go through Adams County's process and they're great people and they'll work with you, but in the meantime, you can violate. I've also seen that once we do approve that we get greater compliance from the applicant. And that's what my hope is today, is that we continue, the applicant will continue to do that investment, that you will continue to follow up, you will continue to come into compliance. So today I will be supporting this land use case. Other commissioners, Steve Odoricio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, I will note that I believe that when we've approved them in the past, it's usually been, I'm not aware of any off the top of my head, but I'm not challenging you, I'm just out of memory. Usually it's been that the case itself was either kind of remediated before we got to this point, or it was going to be remediated as part of this. My concern is, can you go to the Google map, please? My concern is that, and when I look at that, I'm trying to figure out how we can require that to be cleaned up and not to be repeated in the new outdoor storage area, and that's what my concern is repeatedly. And while staff listed, read the storage, outdoor storage definition, which was the right way to handle it, like, let me give you the black and white definition. It's clear that inoperable vehicles and parts would still be allowed in that outdoor storage definition. Correct?
That would be correct.
And so when Commissioner Pinter was asking about, you know, license and operational, like, in my opinion, there is still a risk that the general broad definition outdoor storage could still permit inoperable and unlicensed or unlicensed vehicles and equipment, which would be, in my opinion, could create the risk of this junkyard coming back. What I'm trying to figure out is because those are not permitted under the land use, my concern would be that I would like a condition saying that any vehicles or equipment have to be either operational or for repair or licensed, registered, but I don't think I'm going to get support for that, so I would just lay it out there to see what people think. But I want to find a way now, so then it gets to how can other mechanisms be used in the confines of what we're talking to address this issue, this particular spot? One of the things is if you go to the other, your site plan, I'm emboldened and caught a little bit more supportive of the fact that the gray areas where the outdoor storage will exist, whereas the junkyard that exists now is under the term lot one, lower to the left. And so, and then my question will be for staff and the attorney is when they come in, as our attorney mentioned that they're, once you're done with the site, especially, once you identify a use, change of use permit, you have to come in for a site review, meeting all the standards. Is that the entire site or is it just the part where they want to store the new storage? It's a question for the attorney.
I'm going to defer to staff because they see more of these applications than I do. I'm going to defer to staff because they see more of these applications than I do.
Sorry, thank you. We will be reviewing the change in use permit for the specific area that they're requesting, not for the entire site.
And so that makes me a little nervous because then we're just focusing on the gray area and not paying attention to the rest of it when it's one parcel, one site, in my opinion, that's what makes me nervous. And so what I'm then trying to figure out is then we're stuck relying on the code enforcement to handle that after the fact with basically out of faith. Because we're not applying any sort of requirements or conditions here. So that's where I continue to struggle. I'm going to give credit to the landowner for coming in and cleaning this stuff up. They got rid of the livestock, got rid of the auto repair. They're investing clearly in in trying to clean this up. There's not going to be, we are removing according to what the staff analysis says is the removal of pet food distribution and storage. I think that's a positive, particularly for some of the neighbors, because I do know that that could cause some odor issues. I'm not even, I mean, and then they're removing the single family home, making that an office. That's a decision that but they're adding solar, which is consistent with the CAS plan to make it green energy. But I'm just worried about the outdoor storage. And so I'm okay with solar. I would love to hear from the applicant or the attorney who's looking at me that maybe how can we within the confines legally and ethically, address the issue that that junkyard portion will be cleaned since without having to escalate the code compliance thing. Because I do believe you guys are here in good faith. But any, that property could be sold the next day. And then what do we have to do to clean that up?
Okay, I think there are two issues. The first is, is how do we get you more comfortable about outdoor storage? Because your outdoor storage definition is very broad. And it isn't our intention to have inoperable vehicles stored in our outdoor storage. And I mentioned to Jen that if we would like to add a condition that we narrow down the outdoor storage that doesn't allow for inoperable vehicles, that would be just fine. And so we can add that as a condition, which I think is, is in large part, some of your concern. I mean, what's behind, all of a sudden we have a six foot fence, you can't see anything. So what's behind there? Okay, I get it. But you can always use your Google. So that would be one condition that we would be willing to adopt. As relates to the, to the other issue, I, look, I think we've got, we've got a big process ahead of us for our existing trucking use and tenant. And they have to go, you know, Amelia pulled up for me the change of use checklist that you have online and it's pretty significant. There's a lot to it. We just had to go through it for another matter in Adams County and, and have another hearing on Thursday around just meeting that. Because it's not easy. And so that'll be a process that the, if they want to continue on the site, they'll have to go through. And that's another investment. Either by the tenant or by the landlord. Or that use won't be there. So I just, you do have some protections in your code. I have to say, I mean, for as broad as your definition of outdoor storage maybe, you do have a lot of other protections. And we don't want to turn our thirty five acre site into the highest code compliance visitation site in county history. That's, that doesn't work for a small business.
If I might, I appreciate that. Let me, let me follow up on your offer for the condition. Conditions for rezoning, that's my understanding would are most appropriate when they are in support of complying. A condition would relate back to the comprehensive plan. And in this case, if you were to accept a condition that you just proposed and the board would, I would put on the record that that condition would be in support of the comprehensive plan, particularly also the subarea plan, which identifies this area as green energy and sustainable agriculture. By reducing the potential intensity, which you're offering to do to operable vehicles, I think it's more in line with the green energy and sustainable agricultural designation that this parcel would have, which is these areas focus on providing space for solar farm and other forms of renewable energy and higher intensity ag uses. Which includes vertical farms, greenhouses, hydroponics, along with traditional agriculture. These areas also provide space, supporting office, research, development, and limited residential uses. In my opinion, if you were to limit it to operable vehicles, that's more in line because it's being used for educational purposes, which these trucks can support both the agricultural green and the trans and the, and I look at that. So I would say that as long as we agree that that condition goes back to the comp plan and to the subarea plan, I would feel comfortable proceeding today. If you felt comfortable adding that condition and we had support from my board on that condition based on the fact that it's going to support the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Odoricio, I hear you applicant, you're about to comment. I was most intrigued that you feel like this advances the business interest of your client as well, to move in this direction and that this would more accurately describe where y'all are headed and where your client is headed in the business plan that they have for the site. And so that's what's intriguing to me. In addition to it's more harmonious with our land use, if it would be advantageous to your client's business goals, that is also very interesting to me.
Yeah, I, I think either work and I would just, again, just semantics. What we're doing is we're limiting our outdoor storage to not include inoperable vehicles, right? Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that.
Commissioners, I'd ask if we could take just a brief recess so we could confer with applicant's counsel.
The attorneys want to talk about us, without us.
Okay, do you want to start us off Heidi or Sally?
We've conferred with the applicant's counsel and we think it's appropriate to allow us to work with staff and the applicants on some proposed condition language that would go on the actual PUD plat. And we need a little bit of time to do that, but we think that if you allow us that time, then we, if we could come back on August twelfth. We wouldn't need to re-present, but we would just present basically these proposed additional conditions. So I guess where that leaves you all is if you have any other proposed conditions other than this one about outdoor storage and not including inoperable vehicles. If you could let us know that now, we'll work on all of that between now and August twelfth. But again, the proposal will be to formalize these additional conditions into very specific language that shows up on the plat.
Great. Thank you so much Sally. So I see Commissioner Pinter first and Odoricio.
Thank you for that. I just was confirming, I know that over the summer we had some conferences and international travel and, but I think we're all here on the twelfth. I'm just sort of like, for me, I was just thinking logistically, I think we're all, I'm here, I think we're all here on the twelfth. Okay. Because I know we had some quorum conversations. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, I would support continuing this to August twelfth. I think we could also ask for an update as to how the code compliance issue is going. And if by any sort of chance during that time, that code compliance issue may be withdrawn or settled of some sort to address that issue, that issue of the junkyard piece, then that might be a second piece or an update that you can give at that time. And I again, want to thank staff and my colleagues as well as the applicant for helping us make these improvements.
So I think the question from the attorney to the board was was there any items that you want to include while they go into this extended time with the applicant? So for the sake of time and efficiency, I know and not to stifle conversation, Commissioner Odoricio, I would like you to answer and Commissioner Pinter to answer, are there any items that you want the staff to include? While they go and talk with the applicant before they come back on August the twelfth?
Let me clarify. I don't have any other conditions per se that I would ask that be addressed or added to the particular case. I would say that on the twelfth, though, I would ask that if it's not a condition, we still have an update. And if there's other potential things that could be worked out in that time to address that one area. And to avoid the problems of the future coming back, that's what I would ask for. So no additional conditions, but we could, it does give us some time to see how progress is made on the other portions that are currently underway, that we've just got a it looks like a judgment today. So that goes into effect today. So I think it's, it's kind of a happy situation where we get an update. On how that's going.
So my concern with an update is depending on what is presented would lead to additional questions. So I'm fine with an update. I'm just trying to tease out a little bit what the attorney's ask was of the board. So if it's new information, how do you want to handle that, Commissioner Odoricio?
I just said I would like an update on how that's going.
So if new information is presented on August the twelfth? How are we going to handle that in the case? Executive session?
No, 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 it would definitely be on the public record.
Do you have anything to add, Commissioner Pinter, before I get to Commissioner Malika?
Yes ma'am, thank you Chair. So I appreciate the question. I appreciate you flagging it and trying to actually make us answer the question as asked by our attorneys. I think the offer from applicant to be consistent with their business plan to not have inoperable vehicles and parts and as well as the planning components with non permeable surfaces and outdoor storage and all those parameters. That is what I heard referenced Sally, when you were speaking about a narrow topic for negotiation, just to make sure that's done in a legal but narrow but applicable way.
Right. We just want to make, there weren't other issues beyond the limitation on outdoor storage that you wanted to have addressed as part of these negotiations with the applicant.
That is my hangup at this time. And so I would appreciate that being addressed and I appreciate the comments from my colleague, Commissioner Odoricio, around how to make this consistent with the land use in the area and on this parcel. And also from narrowing to reflect the business case of the applicant themselves.
So Commissioner, are you okay, Commissioner Pinter? Okay, Commissioner Malika, then Henson.
So just to clarify, we, you guys are going to go, you're going to talk about what conditions make sense, what that language looks like. You're going to come back and present on August twelfth. We're not making a decision on this case today. We're going to make that decision on August twelfth, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And at the time on August twelfth, we would be able to get an update from code enforcement just to see how that progress is going, correct?
That's correct, but hopefully it won't lead to additional conditions.
Let's hope. Thanks Sally.
Thanks Sally. Commissioner Henson?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Malika asked the question I had about what the decision point, the date of the decision point, and that is now August twelfth.
That's correct.
Thank you. I have no conditions to add at this time. I would like to say that I want to thank staff and my colleagues for this discussion. There were a myriad of questions, some of them, some of which were being asked in different language with different terminology. A lot of us had similar questions about how to best support small business and also safeguard the protection, safeguard our land here in Adams County and the residents who are impacted by small businesses in Adams County. And what triggers go into effect by approving this zoning update? And those are very important questions. I appreciate the collaboration from the applicant on the condition. And thank you, Commissioner Odoricio, because I, I live in an area in an incorporated area, but near a lot of unincorporated and in an area of the county where I see abuses of, of storage and of illegal businesses businesses operating illegally where they're not technically allowed. I know how long it takes to tease these things out. I know the impact and the duress that it puts on neighbors in the community. And those issues are extremely important to me. And that's why I am really appreciative that we took the time to have this discussion and to parse these things out because what we do here matters. And what we're going to do on August twelfth with this plot of land matters. And so I want to be very clear to the public why it's taking this long. If anybody who's following along, and I thank everybody for their patience in the audience today. Because this is the work of the people and this is what is incumbent on us as county commissioners to pursue and be, and clarify and make sure that we're understanding the impact of the decisions we are being asked to make by residents that will impact other residents. So thank you staff and thank you everybody for the discussion. And I'll look forward to the update that we'll hear on August twelfth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Henson. I will just add as a point of personal privilege. Many discussions today, we've seen this a couple of times of land use that we've added executive sessions. My ask of this board is that if we want additional information, provide it in the packet, if we want some additional assistance on conditions and notes and impacts and comprehensive plans and how they all play out in land use, is that this is something we ask of the county manager to provide to us. That is outside of this, outside of the land use hearing cases. The other thing is, is that we've had added additional discussion time, which I think is prudent to do the people's work. We allotted two and a half hours for land use case. We're not beholden to that, other than we do have the public paid staff here and want to be mindful of people's time. So I don't know if that is a discussion that the board needs to have with staff and the county manager that we add additional time to these land use hearing cases. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to extend, continue PUD twenty twenty three dash two Van Pelt planned unit development amendment to date certain of August the twelfth. Motion passes five to zero. So thank you to the staff, thank you to the applicant and your representation for being here today.
I love when people use the adaptive technology. Good job. Make the podium work for you.
Yep, exactly. Alright, uh, good morning Commissioners, Nick Heverson with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'll be presenting the Welby Junction case, uh case number PRC twenty twenty-five dash one. And this is located at twenty-four oh one East Seventy-Eighth Avenue. Uh, so there are three requests before you uh this morning or this afternoon. Um, the first one is for a major amendment to an approved preliminary development plan. And this is within the Oxon Free at Welby Planned Unit Development, and this is on approximately twenty-six acres. The second request is for a major amendment uh to an approved preliminary plat, and this would be to create two hundred and twenty-two lots and twenty-three tracks. Uh, then the last request is for a waiver from our subdivision design standards, and this is to allow greater, greater than a three to one lot depth width ratio. So on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three, the county commissioners uh approved. The Oxon Free at Welby Preliminary Development Plan, and this established the Oxon Free at Welby PUD. Uh, at this time, or at that time, uh, this established rent, uh rental community product. And this was two hundred and sixty-five single-family attached and detached dwellings. At that hearing, uh, also there was an approved preliminary plat, and this reconfigured the overall site from five existing parcels. Uh, into ten lots and four tracks. So here's a look at where the site's located. Uh, it's just south, south of uh East Eightieth Avenue to the east of York Street. East Seventy-Eighth Avenue is directly adjacent to the south, and then Highway seventy-six to the southeast, and the two seventy twenty-five junction is located here to the southwest. Here's a closer look uh again at the site, Seventy-Eighth Avenue directly adjacent to the south, which is where one of the access points would be located. Uh, this is East Seventy-Ninth Avenue located to the north here. Uh, this would continue and uh punch through to York Street to provide an additional access point, and I'll go over that in a little bit more detail on some upcoming slides. Uh, again, York Street located to the west here. This is the Assumption Catholic Church located directly adjacent to the west. Uh, and the area is mostly surrounded by quite a mix of uses. Uh, there's some multifamily west of York Street here, some commercial. Light industrial, moderate industrial located in the area, uh, and then some park space south of Seventy-Eighth Avenue. Uh, so again, the current zoning for this property is uh PUDP, uh, and then it's surrounded uh by a mixture of. Uh, zone districts, uh, including some commercial and residential along York Street. Uh, some agriculture and then uh some I-one directly adjacent to the east here, and then some I-two directly adjacent uh to the north. The future land use designation for this entire area, uh, it's within the Welby Subarea Plan, which designates this as mixed-use neighborhood. So this would be compatible uh within the Welby Subarea Plan. So first, when looking at the criteria for approval for a major amendment of a preliminary plat, we look to see that it conforms with our subdivision design standards. That there's adequate water and sewer service. Uh, any soil or topographical conditions have been identified. That there's adequate drainage infrastructure as well as public infrastructure, that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan and any applicable subarea plans. That it's consistent with our development standards and is compatible with the surrounding area. So here's a look at a page from their preliminary plat application. Uh, again, the entire site outlined and read here. Uh, so again, previously approved out here, it was two hundred and sixty-five for rent uh units and totaled ten lots and four tracks. So this amendment is now proposing two hundred and twenty-two uh for sale product residential lots. Uh, and this would also include twenty-three tracks for things like parks, drainage, open space, and some of these alleyways that you see here for. Uh, some of the alley-loaded units. They do, uh, they're proposing Clayton Streets. This is where that access would connect Seventy-Eighth to Seventy-Ninth to the north here. Uh, which is Seventy-Ninth is uh outside of the property boundary. Sometimes it's hard to identify that, uh, but that is uh outside of their property. Uh, and again, that'll punch through to York Street located to the west here. Uh, so next, for their amendment to the preliminary development plan for that criteria, we look to see that it conforms to the county's long-term plans. That it's consistent with our development standards, that it's designed to mitigate uh any effects on adjacent uses, that it conforms to our, uh, the county's transportation plan. That it's consistent with uh drainage plans, that it allows for regulation of development to mitigate any effects on the surrounding area. That it's consistent with any approved uh overall development plan, and again, that it's compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, so here's a page from their uh preliminary development plan, uh, and this really highlights kind of the overall residential uh units. Uh, and what's located throughout the site. The previously approved uh PDP proposed eighty-five single-family detached units. Uh, sixty duplex dwelling units, and then a hundred and twenty single-family townhomes. And this averaged to be uh a density of approximately ten point one dwelling units per acre for the site. Uh, so this amendment is now proposing forty-four single-family detached homes. And it's kind of hard to make out, but that's uh really the perimeter of this western boundary here, which is adjacent to a private drive. And then along the eastern boundary and kind of at the overall northeastern portion of the development. Uh, they're also proposing uh a hundred and sixteen duplex dwelling units and then sixty-two single-family townhomes. So this uh has a density of approximately eight and a half dwelling units per acre now. Uh, and then just an overall net reduction of forty-three units from what was originally approved out here. Uh, I also wanted to highlight some of their open space areas, because there's been a, a couple of changes uh here, as well as uh the parking layout that they provided. Uh, previously approved out here, and I just should probably highlight first that for planned unit developments, we require thirty percent open space. Uh, as part of the overall development, and then twenty-five percent of that thirty percent needs to be considered uh active recreation. So previously approved, they had fifteen point seven acres uh of opens, open space. And four point one acres of that was considered that active uh recreation piece. They were proposing a clubhouse uh in this general vicinity here, kind of at the northeastern portion of the overall development. Uh, this uh amendment is now proposing nine point one acres of open space, so roughly thirty-five percent of the development. And then three point one acres of that would be uh that active recreation component. Uh, they are doing away with the clubhouse, but this piece here is gonna continue to be uh active open space or part of that active recreation. Uh, and this would include things like um just open turf, uh multi-sports use lawn they call out, and then. Uh, playgrounds be located in these red asterisk portions, uh, kind of in the middle of the site, and then uh adjacent to the church at that southwest uh area. Uh, then for parking, they're providing two resident parking spaces uh for each of the homes within their garage space. And then the front-loaded homes would have two visitor parking spaces as well. Uh, and then the alley-loaded homes would have uh guest parking available uh as well on the street. Uh, there would be no on-street parking on uh Clayton Street here. This, again, that north-south street, that would be a public roadways. There'd be no on-street parking there, and then there'd be no uh street parking located on Seventy-Ninth or Seventy-Eighth. So it's really about uh the, the private drives that would be designed wide enough to, again, accommodate uh parking on both sides of those streets. Uh, and then lastly, just that waiver, I wanted to go over that criteria. This is for, again, those uh lots that don't meet our uh lot depth to width ratio of three to one. Uh, we look to see that there's a hardship or difficulties that resolve from compliance with our development standards and regulations. Uh, that the purpose of the standards and regulations are served by a greater extent by this alternative proposal. And that it would not nullify the purpose of our standards and regulations. Uh, here's some photos from the site. Uh, these are all looking from Seventy-Eighth. This one's looking towards the north, so Clayton Street. Uh, would be located a little bit further to the east here, uh, but this does currently again go through to Seventy-Ninth. Uh, this photo on the right is looking towards the south, uh, with kind of the ball fields located over here. Uh, this photo is looking towards the east, and then this last photo is looking towards the west, and you can kind of make out the church uh in the distance there. So during their referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the site. We sent a total of two hundred and thirty-seven notifications. We did receive two comments. Uh, both of those were in support, just noting that they would like to see additional uh housing offered for the community. And uh, it would be nice to see more families within the community. Uh, and one of those letters of support also was from uh the church uh directly adjacent out there. Uh, and then there were no uh outstanding referral agency comments as well. Uh, this went to Planning Commission on June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five. Uh, there was one public comment at that hearing. Uh, and this um gentleman had some concerns and just wanted to make sure everything would be addressed as far as truck traffic goes at that. Uh, Seventy-Ninth Ave and York Street kind of interchange right there, and that it would be built uh adequate for trucks uh coming and going. Uh, at that entrance. Planning Commission did recommend to vote uh to approve, uh, not the waiver, the waiver just comes be- comes before uh the county commissioners. But of both of the amendments uh by vote of seven to zero. Uh, and staff also does feel that this request is still consistent with uh our comprehensive plan, with our development standards and regulations. And would continue to be compatible with the surrounding area. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of major amendment to the preliminary development plan. The major amendment to the preliminary plat and the waiver from sub- subdivision design standards with twenty findings of fact, one condition, and eight notes. And here are the findings of fact. The one condition is that the application for roadway vacation to remove the existing right-of-way network out there. Uh, throughout the site would need to be submitted to our department. Uh, in conjunction with their final plat and final development plan applications, and approval of this amendment to the preliminary plat is contingent upon the applicant. Or property owner's ability to obtain approval of these roadway vacations within the boundaries of this site. Uh, so those final, that final plat and FDP or Final Development Plan would come back uh before the county commissioners. Uh, and then here are the recommended notes, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you Nick. Um, real quick, so questions from the board is next. Um, the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Then it's questions from the board. Uh, whoever signed up for public comment will get to your comments uh for this land use hearing. Um, applicant response, if it's requested, it's Commissioner discussion, then we'll go to a motion. So I have Commissioner Henson first.
Thank you. So uh, I'm, uh, thanks for the presentation. I am pleased to see that these units are actually. Now going to be for sale. These are going to be for sale properties. I, um, I'm very excited to see that change. I do have a couple of questions. So there's uh, from the first application, and I, there's been a decrease in open space. And a decrease in the net units. Can staff just uh comment as to what triggered those changes?
I think the applicant would probably give a better explanation on why the number of units decreased, but the amount of open space decreased as well. I know that that's part of their, their presentation.
Okay, and then regarding the waiver, um, can you please uh talk me through um. What, what the, what it is that we're being, what the waiver is exactly asking and how, and, and implications of that, that we're being asked to approve?
Yeah, so when a lot uh has a greater lot depth to width. Ratio of three to one, then we require that waiver. We like to see traditional lots built at a certain. Depth to width. Um, and it, when it, when it gets, trying to put it in layman's terms, like long and skinny, that's, that's, we don't like to see that type of lot layout.
Is this because of that, some of these properties are alley-loaded, or what? Can you speak to what?
That's correct. The design of some of the uh, the duplex units uh and whatnot, and trying to fit all those units on, uh, in this. Specific areas created a, a longer, narrower lot, so that's why they're asking for this waiver, because that ratio would not be able to be met.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I was trying to get at, so the public would understand w- why we're granting waivers, uh, or being asked to grant a waiver. What that actually means. And then looking on Seventy-Eighth Avenue, so it says there's primary interests, that street is not currently named. And then there it, but there is access from Seventy-Eighth onto Clayton Street, that's my question.
That's correct.
Okay, so both of those, and then Seventy-Ninth, and then is there? And then there's also another street to the, to the east here that's not named, and that's, ob- obviously that gets you pretty much to anywhere. There is film more, great, okay. Thank you. And then um. And then the, and there's, will I have some questions then probably for the applicant regarding uh the clubhouse? Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, thank you. Um, there was also the, I think you were just on it, the slide that had all the trees and the, this one, thank you. Are these, I have a tree question. Are these trees symbolic or enumerated? Like, how many trees are there?
So that is something that we would review at a later point um during the change in use process or the FDP. Um, process. They're supposed to give us more specifics on their landscape standards uh for the overall development, so I wouldn't hold them to this site plan specific.
Okay, um.
But to my knowledge, sorry, they would be tree-lined.
I'm sorry, what, what?
To my knowledge, they, the, the streets would be tree-lined, similar to this, just not. The exact quantity that you may see here.
Okay, so is there a minimum threshold for tree-lined that we, you use as a reference point for developing that landscape plan?
We do, and I do not have that off the top of my head.
We can, I can get that answer later. I am curious about the number of trees, because this looks very nice and shady. But I want, this implies a certain density of tree, obviously within healthy tree planting parameters, but. Curious about that, but we can, I can get that answer later. Um, with regard to the parks, um, and the programming in the parks, is that also a question for the applicant, similar to Commissioner Henson's? Clubhouse question?
Correct.
Okay, then I will wait for the applicant.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Any other Commissioners? Questions for staff? Not seeing any. So the applicant would like to come up and state your name and address for the record.
After, afternoon Commissioners, I appreciate the time. My name is Chelsea Green. I'm with the applicant, Meritage Homes, seventy-nine hundred East Unit Avenue, Denver. I'm hopeful that you can get our presentation pulled up here. Thank you. Alright, so I serve as the Director of Entitlements for Meritage Homes. Uh, we have had this project under contract since about October of twenty twenty-four. And are really excited to be in front of you. Um, I am going to give you kind of a brief overview of what Meritage is. What we're trying to do here at Welby, and then turn it over to the project manager, Joshua Bott, to walk you through uh a bit more of the detail. And then we're always happy to uh answer questions, and we do have our engineer and planner and land use attorney here. So I think we can get all your questions answered, uh, if you'll, you'll fumble through this with us. So Redlands and Norris are your planner and engineer. They were the same. Uh, planner and engineer who originally got the PDP approved and are now working on that major PDP amendment with us. That's before you today. Meritage Homes is a publicly traded home builder. We are the fifth largest home builder as of uh the closings. Uh, in twenty twenty-four with fifteen thousand six hundred and eleven. We're in fourteen different states, specifically in Colorado. We've been here since two thousand and five, and we have twenty-one active communities. From Greeley all the way down to South Colorado Springs, Brighton, Commerce City, Jeffco. You name it on the Front Range, and we have built or are currently building there. Meritage Homes um. Strategy for Colorado is we try and target entry-level homes. And areas where we are able to achieve that entry-level price point. That entry-level price point, obviously, when I say that, I always get a question on what roughly those are. So I'm just gonna not make you ask that question and give you those right now. So on our single-family detached. It's about sixteen hundred to twenty-three hundred square feet, and based off all our Zonda market research. We are looking at, and cost for this development, we're looking at a mid-six hundred to low seven hundred for those few single-family detached. For the paired homes or those duplex lots, those are rear-loaded. And those would be in the mid-five hundreds for about sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, and still that three to four bedroom range. The townhomes would be in the high fours to low fives with a square footage of twelve hundred to fifteen hundred square feet. And a two to three bedroom range. Obviously, you see here examples of our architecture. Uh, further, further details of that architecture will be provided with that FDP. But this gives you an understanding of, of that farmhouse, traditional craftsman style that we would be wanting to bring to this Welby neighborhood. Alright, so overall, obviously, this is uh the site, um, a high-level view. We're really excited. This is what Meritage Homes as a public builder calls an infill site, meaning we're, we're closer to that urban core, which is, was. Makes it really exciting for us and the walkability and the opportunity to partner with the Assumption Church and the, the Welby Neighborhood Group here. To, to potentially bring this project to you. So I will let Joshua Botts now come up and get into some more of the project details. And then we'll be ready to answer any questions.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Joshua Botts, Project Manager. Um, so as Chelsea alluded to, this is an infill site. And a lot of times with infill, there's a lot of local amenities that really make it right for residential development. This would also be the case for this, for this property here. Within a mile radius, you have access to five different community schools. Um, including the Assumption Church, which we've worked with Father Nick pretty extensively on a couple plat notes, because they have the church built. Um, including the Assumption Church, which we've worked with Father Nick pretty extensively on a couple of plat notes because they have the church bells, et cetera. Um, really excited to integrate this project into the church property as well for their use. Within a twelve-minute bike ride, you can access two RTD stations. So multimodal transportation is an opportunity. And then within a two-minute bike ride, there's a regional trail system. So for those of you who were around the first go around with this, uh, the site plan probably looks very familiar. The same general, uh, right-of-way transportation network is being, uh, maintained with this application. There's still alley loaded products as well assumed here. The general makeup and programming of the open space is intact from the prior application. Um, but the one thing I did want to note with this is what we've kind of alluded to, the density. And Commissioner Henson, you had a great observation that the open space decreased. Part of that is just that we're going to two hundred and twenty-two platted lots from the prior application, which only had ten platted lots. So. Due to every lot having to meet development standards now, uh, the open space requirement default decreases. Uh, additionally, there's just great connectivity to those amenities that I was just speaking to. Really a prime location there at the corner of Seventy-Eighth and York Street. So in great foresight from the prior application, the industrial users to the north and how this site is going to remain, remain compatible. With those users, uh, there was a approval for a sixty-eight foot right-of-way. So realigning what is existing of Cleveland Street and that's a sixteen-foot edge-to-edge asphalt paved road as it is. Call it forty-five degree angle. It doesn't make for good turn radius as it exists and certainly not wide enough for two-way traffic. The sixty-eight foot right-of-way is really a core. Design concept we're keeping with this application to keep the connectivity through Seventy-Eighth and Seventy-Ninth Avenue for those users. And then doing our homework, just from the prior application before we acquired it, uh, we heard a lot of concerns about. The parking situation that could exist, of course, integrating new residents into this area. And of course those impacts and what that would mean to the industrial users. So. In addition to keeping that sixty-eight foot right-of-way template for Clayton Street and then a. Upgraded template for Seventy-Ninth Avenue, which is the industrial corridor for a sixty-foot right-of-way to right-of-way. We really focused on how can we internalize the parking? The prior application didn't really commit to that. It was to be resolved in the FDP, but we wanted to commit to that early. So what we looked at, our consultant team worked with Adams County Right-of-Way and Adams County Fire to try to find a solution to where we could park on both sides of the streets internal to the site. And actually netted really drastic results for us. So. From the previous application to where we are today, there was a forty percent increase of onsite parking. Which will allow you to actually prohibit parking on Clayton Street and Seventy-Ninth Avenue. So we're net parking two point eight spaces per unit. And that would result in about six hundred and twenty total spaces as each unit's going to have a two-car attached garage. So to keep this brief today, that concludes our presentation, but we're available for any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So questions from the board for the applicant? Commissioner Mulligan?
Quick question on Clayton Street. So I understand your need to make sure that that's wide. That is going to be a ma- major thoroughfare as people, you know, access the neighborhood. Is, at what point do you guys consider, or is this something part of your, your planning of, you know? Speed mitigation in that community, speed bump? I mean, that's. As I'm thinking about it, that'd probably be one of the biggest complaints that I get right away, um, on Clayton Street.
Yeah. So one of the first design changes that we did make is we no longer have homes fronting onto Clayton Street. All those duplexes will not be fronting. So you'll just have side yards there and then those will also have additional tracks with, with a sidewalk and will be intentionable, intentional about. Uh, having a pedestrian crossing there at Seventy-Ninth and Clayton and really trying to keep people on one side of Clayton or the other. Um, so that is kind of why we tried to keep that internal pocket park in each corner. To keep the flow of traffic within kind of an, an internalized trail and people not defaulting to use Clayton or Seventy-Ninth.
And then for like roadway though, like to manage speed in that area? Is that part of your?
It's gonna follow the county's, uh, industrial cross-section. Guidelines.
Okay. Staff, do you have any idea what that looks like for you guys? I don't know. I'm just curious.
Hello, Matt Evans, uh, Community Economic Develop- Development Engineer. Um, the county does have a program for, uh, reviewing safety issues like that and we will certainly make them, uh, uh, submit a, a plan to us to show what kind of. Traffic calming devices they could use out there. Uh, things like speed bumps probably aren't going to be a very good idea in this case because of the truck traffic. It's, they just don't work very well. Uh, but there are things we can do. We can, um, you know, reduce speeds. We can put down, uh, you know, uh, they, they could even, uh, do the, the. A little narrowing of the road in certain places, but we will have them absolutely look at that. Um, and, uh, from the previous me, uh, planning commission hearing, one of the neighbors had concerns about even the turning movement from York Street on the Seventy-Ninth. So we're already making, gonna have, make them do a, a program called auto, auto turn, which checks the turning raises to make sure there's not a problem with it, with the, uh, thing.
Okay, so that work will be done as you guys.
During the FDP stage and the engineering review of the, uh, the site.
All right, thank you.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Pinter?
Yes, thank you. Um, I did have some questions, um, as you probably heard previewed during the staff section about, um, the parks, how you plan to program them. Um, I see, I heard commentary that you intend to allow the, the church, school, et cetera, to use the. Uh, pocket park as design. Can you talk a little bit about park programming and how? This will be a community amenity, both for the residents and for the neighbors?
Absolutely. So we have already met with Father Nick on the proposed park design adjacent there to the assumptions. A Catholic church and are planning to have a fence for them to be able to use, uh, e- easier access for them. Uh, that one is going to be a typical shade structure, playground, big enough playground equipment that will require the area drains and a, a full functioning park. With, um, and then you'll have more passive between the duplexes, right? Cause we don't really want kids running and screaming outside of front doors.
That kind of thing.
Exactly. And then we'll have another programmed park area again, a tot lot, maybe smaller equipment, um, for smaller children. Or that's where it gets worked out in our FDP of what exact equipment, but another play area. Um, there before you cross Clayton and then, uh, behind the single family home, the, once we finalize the, our grading plans out there. And see how much space we have out there that could also become active. Right now we're counting it as passive. That is where the old clubhouse used to be. For this to be a for-sale product at the price point we are trying to hit, they cannot afford a pull-in clubhouse. The operation and maintenance fees and the cost to maintain that, even if it's through an HOA or Metro District is just two. Two burden sums for, for the price point and, and product we are trying to achieve here.
Great, thank you. Uh, that actually leads into, um, another question. Um. How will the landowners, residents moving forward handle maintenance? Um. What is your plan for, um, how that, those assets will be cared for into the future decades?
Yes. So currently, uh, because you have a lot of your private alleyways and all of those tracked areas, this board. We are working, um, to submit an application to form a metropolitan district that would come before you all as a board. Uh, we have run that scenario where there will be a metropolitan district in place for those larger assets. As well as or a homeowners association. So it'll be one or the other. Obviously the applicant's preference is going to be a metro district, has easier access to. Financing for repair and replacements for those end users come fifteen, twenty years, et cetera, which is why we're, we're planning to submit that application.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. Great, thank you Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Do the prices that you quoted us include potential metro district fees?
They do. They, um, so the, the price points we're aiming for, I can pull another sheet that has the average mortgages, but it includes. Homeowner insurance, taxes, et cetera, right? It's a benefit of Meritage being a developer and a builder as we look at our end user being that builder and not a selling lots. And a builder figuring it out. So we are very sensitive to the overall payment that our buyer would have to make here and does factor in that additional tax.
Thank you. So then whatever, uh, prices are adverti- when, when the time comes and you're ready to start selling and it'll save prices from whatever those quotes are, that will include, that will. Include. So that, so that people, so people won't be coming into buy, look for a, a, a home to purchase for X amount of dollars and then.
Yeah, when we quote our, what we call our monthly mortgage payment, that would include that full mill levy of that property tax. Homeowner insurance, any dues that we're projecting for that long-term entity as well as obviously then your mortgage.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners? Questions for applicants? All right.
And did you ask about the number of trees?
I didn't. I wa- I'm waiting for a staff. Is this, are you ready? Okay. Well, I asked about the requirements. I love that you guys have.
It's outlined in the PDP. The minimum requirements are in the PDP.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what I was just going to say. There are buffer yard requirements listed. Exterior property boundaries not adjacent to public right-of-way shall have a five-foot buffer yard. Buffer yard shall be landscaped with one tree per eighty feet. Um, that's one of the standards. And then there's another section below that talks about landscaping requirements. Um, street scape shall be landscaped with one tree and two shrubs per forty feet, measured fifty feet from the stop sign excluding curb cuts. There's, there's a lot of detail here. Um, all of this is going to be specifically laid out, um, in the FDP. So it will come back again. It'll, oftentimes it's on consent. But you, you will see, uh, the, the actual landscape plan, um, again.
Great, thank you Jen. Thank you.
Yes, and there, there's also front yard landscaping, right?
Yes.
So there's. Marketing and sales loves landscaping too.
Yes, they do. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is, um, questions from the public or comments from the public. So Erica, who do you have signed up this morning?
Um, the first person is Norma Frank.
As you make your way down, I want to thank the members of the public for staying for this land use case. I realize that we're, um. Well into the afternoon right now. So if you can please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning commissioners. Oh, it's not morning. Good afternoon commissioners. Norma Frank, seventy-four oh one Ray Street. As many of you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Welby and, uh, our business also calls Welby home. So I'm here this morning to share, oh, excuse me. Our excitement to welcome Meritage Homes into the Welby community. Uh, this is another one of those, uh, lifelong projects, Welby projects that are coming to fruition. So, uh, yeah, needless, needless to say, we're very excited about it. They've been great coming to the community, uh, from the very beginning, um, having review meetings. Getting to know Welby culture, becoming very good friends with our, uh, church. And, um, so it just shows what kind of wonderful, um, neighbors they're going to be for the Welby community. The, um. Big, great additions to Welby, um, will be the, uh. Aspect that, um, it's, it's homes and it kind of fits that piece of the sub-area plan. Uh, that we worked so hard to put in place when we were working on that. Uh, so we're very, very, very excited, needless to say, um, to have Meritage. And we support them explicitly. Also, it's been a pleasure to see the commissioners two weeks in a row. But keep them coming. I'll, I'll come every week. If it's a good Welby project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erica?
Crystal, and I, I apologize. I'm not sure on the last name.
Okay. Crystal, if you could come down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Crystal Peja, twenty-seven twenty-one E Seventy-Ninth Avenue. I've spent a good portion of my life around heavy equipment. And are accustomed to any and all nuisances associated with industrial business. I also know how to be safe around semi trucks and trailers. Future residents are not likely accustomed to these things. And that is why we still have concerns regarding safety, compatibility. And the potential negative impact on our reasonable business operations. With the Welby Subarea Plan's vision for mixed use, including commercial, would make this development more compatible with existing land uses. The homes along Seventy-Ninth Avenue, um, are, that's not something I needed to say. We appreciate the applicant's, uh, willingness to accommodate industrial traffic. But we cannot overlook or understate the prevailing issue regarding safety and determined to the existing industrial businesses. With all due respect. The people that live in the area, namely me, and I have a business there as well. We see the trucks come through on a daily basis. And, um, you know, you're going to have a lot of people there. You're going to have a lot of families, uh, kids, pets. And we just want to make sure everybody's safe. I also don't want to have to fight every day with the new residences because we have noise. There's going to be noise. We're an industrial business. We do structural steel. You're going to hear grinding. You're going to hear noise. You're going to have, um, trucks, like I said, coming in and out every single day. So I ask the commissioners, please to look at that. Pay attention to us. I know there's only four businesses back there, but. You know, we, we've been there a long time. There's one business that's been there for sixty-plus years. And, um, you know, we, we want to be good neighbors, but we also want to have. Our rights to have our business and to live in the area considered. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Erica?
That was everyone signed up.
Okay, thank you. So if there's any member of the public that's present that would like to speak to this land use, if you want to come down and state your name and address for the record. So anyone here from the public that would like to come down and talk to this land use case? Okay, get, come on down. Yes. Good afternoon. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Carol Ducci, five eighty-one E Seventy-Sixth Avenue. And I just want to tell you, as last week, I'm excited about this and I think it will be a good improvement to the Welby area. So I'm definitely in favor of it. That's all I have.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this matter? Okay, not seeing any. The next item then, um, if the applicant would like to respond to that, if not, we'll move on to Commissioner Discussion. I didn't see anything of record. So it's to the board for discussion. Commissioner Odoricio?
I, I'm not going to ask for a condition to notify the new, uh, property owners, but I will say that I think it behooves. Everyone, when if you, when you get those new, uh, tenants that you have them fully understand. And then that's part of their due diligence too, but also just be very open and honest about the stuff that is around them. So we don't have any of those potential conflicts with the businesses and existing property owners nearby. And I think that. I think that would be important. And I assume that there's going to be, like, they're going to be able to drive around and look at everything most of the time. Uh, so I hope that comes out, but I think it is important to make sure that, uh, we don't get complaints later on. That they come back and start complaining about the property that was next door. So I don't, no, I'm not asking for a condition.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Yes, I echo, I, yes, I was having the same thoughts. We do need to make sure that we have the safety in the neighborhood. That buyers are informed and also that they understand the history of the area so that there is not an assumption. Not based on anything that they would be told, but just something that gets into people's minds that somehow if they. Move into that area, it will change because there's now a housing development there. So just lots of clear. Factual information to, for potential buyers again. And I do, do just want to comment again that I'm very happy that these are become, these are for-sale properties. Very happy about that. And, uh. And we could, because we do want to report, uh, respect and support our small businesses who exist in that area and have been there a long time contributing to our, to our economy and our neighborhood.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Other commissioners? I will just add, um, I have nothing to add to what the, uh, Commissioner Odoricio and Henson had stated. As we see this area change and we see, uh, definitely residential come in, we have, we just approved a. The first reading, um, of a project on Washington Street and now this one is on York Street. The county has made significant improvements on Washington. Then we're making a significant investment on York Street. So we look forward to. The completion of York Street, but what I would really want to talk about, not necessarily to the, um, developer yourself, is that we really need to. This is a food desert area. Um, so our economic development, um. So our economic development influence, resources needs to be in this area. It's a great area to live in. It's RTD has access whether you are heading up north or you head down south on York Street. The county's made a large investment. So I think working with the city of Thornton, I think Commerce City. Is also similar into that area, but really that unincorporated Adams County area. A need for grocery, small grocery store, grocery restaurants, I think would be a significant improvement. As well as a needed amenity for all the neighbors existing and future. So those are my only comments. There's no additional discussion. The item is up for the boards recommend consideration.
I will make a motion to approve the preliminary development plan. Major amendments to the preliminary plat and waiver from subdivision design standards, PRC twenty twenty-five dash one with twenty findings of fact, one fact, one condition and eight notes.
Second.
And I, oh, can I make a comment, please? And I just want to say thank you to the residents who stayed and thanks to the applicant for staying today. And I'm happy to, and if you can't tell, I'm very happy to support this. I think it's going to be a great asset. I've driven along that area for quite some time and I'm very excited that there are going to be. Homes, new homes coming into that area. So happy to support.
Great, the motion passes five to zero. So congratulations to the developer and again, thank you to the neighbors for being here for your public comment. So with no additional items on the agenda, we are adjourned today at twelve forty-two PM.